Well, don't do that yet.
I'm stuffing it.
Have you submitted any plans?
Yes.
The exposure that we often read at these meetings and had is that we may approve a project typically kind of all comes towards out of things. But they don't have to be in water for it for anybody applying to know that they aren't going to be, we may get approvals, but they may not be able to build. Just so everybody knows that. Second thing, the meeting from the three minutes of divide meeting, Jared. You go over that?
Over the minutes?
The minutes.
Yeah, and I gave the corrections to check.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything to add on that? Motion to accept the minutes for the entire meeting.
Make the motion.
I hear a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Your eyes have it. Okay, let's get underway. All right, the agenda consists of still eight items, the old business, one new business, no public hearing. Not this one. The first item on the agenda is New York Fallsburg or Frank Brown Road or whatever you want to call it, the solar field. You're up.
Walter's walking in.
Okay, perfect. I'm just tall.
We don't need walking, you can have them.
Well, my name's about now. I was up here last, um, last month. Um, but you guys have requested from us a sound study, which we provided to the board for you. Um, so you should have gotten that. In the meantime, we have drafted a resolution, which Dylan's inbox today. Um, it's my understanding that we will be going over that together um, towards the end of this meeting. Um, part of that resolution mentions, um, this in my hand, Stone, this is a, an FAA notice that is, um, it just talks about that, like the fact that the solar field is not within five miles of an airport. And that, um, the notice is required. Uh, we also have very, very minor details updated on, um, the site plans. So we have a few sets to share with you guys. It's nothing vital. It's nothing to the site plans themselves. It's just, um, details about the racking, changing from twenty to fifteen feet where necessary, so all according to plan. Um, so those are updated today as well. They're just for the board. To make sure he hadn't has one.
What about the discussion with D E C about the placement?
Um, not for all to come.
Yeah, that's why she brought me.
Oh, okay, I wonder.
Um, you got any landfill solar project where there's an active ongoing landfill closure plan, which has been sent to Ken? The D C has the final say over what you can and can't do. This represents the maximum size this project would be. My expectation is that it'll be quite a bit smaller than that once the D E C starts imposing their rules, which are very difficult to understand because we've not done anything in region three. The rules are different in each region. We don't know until we get through this process with the town and bring a map to the D E C where they're going to say that there are parts of this map, like I don't think they're going to allow us to do anything in this area outside of this berm. Because the topo is fully functional for racking in our racking company's opinion, but may not be in the D E C's opinion. So ultimately, at the end of the day, what we're asking the town to do is approve what would be the maximum extent of development, but we've included in the resolution. And I've mentioned it here before that this is a stop along the way to the ultimate permit you need, which is an amendment to the landfill closure plan. The town has a landfill closure plan approved by the D E C way back when? Twenty, twenty some years ago? We have to apply to the D E C for an amendment to that landfill closure plan because the landfill closure plan says that we'll put a membrane down, that we'll put topsoil down, that we'll plant grass, and we'll never do anything there. We have to get that amended.
That'll be a condition of approval.
It is a condition of approval in the resolution that we prepared, yes. And I've mentioned it a couple of times in the text of what we sent Dylan that this is a theoretical maximum, but the actual amount will be whatever part of this the D E C actually allows us uh, to build.
If you're explaining to the board the, uh, deep situation of the fact that we don't do it on, on this type of deal.
Well, it's, I think it's, I think it's fairly, I think it's fairly straightforward. There's regs issued by the Department of Environmental Conservation after publication under the, um, State's Administrative Procedures Act, which Dylan is extremely familiar with. Um, the D E C adopted regulations under SEACR to exempt certain things from SEACR requirements. One example that's very simple, we deal with all the time is a a building permit for a single family house. That's going to impact real estate, but you don't have to go through SEACR to apply for building permit. To allow landfills to be, um, used for other purposes, um, the D E C has made the construction of a solar energy system smaller than twenty-five acres in footprint exempt from SEACR. It's on a list called a type two action. It's in
six seventeen point five B fourteen.
Thank you.
That helpful?
Yeah, well, I wanted the board to understand. I read it.
Yeah, so we're again, seeking an approval of a layout, the maximum of which would be this layout, but I'm expecting certain parts of it that are on the other side of these berms, like these few lines here and these uh, modules and racking back here may not be acceptable to the D E C. The other thing we don't know at this point, there's a hundred and twenty-five vents at that landfill. And some regions of the D E C allow you to build racking right up close to the vents because if there's methane gas coming out, it doesn't really in any way interfere with the sun hitting a photovoltaic panel. In a project we're doing in the Buffalo area, they're making us stay. They're drawing a circle ten feet around each vent and not allowing us to put anything within ten feet of a vent.
What's the worst going to happen? Eternal flame?
Um, I don't think there's much happening at this landfill other than coyote hunting.
Yeah.
Any board members have questions?
I have a quick question. How much dirt covers over the membrane on this landfill? Do you know?
We, we don't know. We will have to test that as part of the D E C, um, review process. We do know how much dirt is supposed to be over.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Yeah, okay.
The landfill closure plan that was approved by the D E C, it was prepared by Sterling Environmental, uh, from the Albany area, a guy named Mark Millsbaugh, who's a principal of that firm, actually prepared it himself. It was not like some employee there. It was back when he had a smaller firm. And I know Ken has taken a look at it from Keystone. We have to go to the D E C. We have to, um, apply to amend the landfill closure plan. We'll have to comply with whatever requests they make, and they're probably going to make us go out there with a shovel and dig down to the membrane and document in certain areas how much overburden is on top of the membrane.
Do you know approximately what it is?
It's, I know what it's supposed to be.
Oh, what's it supposed to be?
Three feet.
Okay.
I don't know what it is because.
So when we put these panels in though, don't we have to drive metal stakes down?
These will be on concrete ballast.
Okay, okay.
These will be on concrete ballast. And the problem that I've envisioning, Greg, is that the racking manufacturer will guarantee that the racking won't shift on land sloped up to a certain steepness.
All right.
The D E C may have a more conservative view toward that. This area back here is like more than ten percent great. The racking manufacturer will guarantee the stability of the racking up to fourteen percent. The D E C may tell us, you can't do that. We want you to only build on areas where the and the way you build on a slope with, um, with ballast racking, you don't dig into the ground. You bring truckloads of gravel there. You make a pile of rocks and you put the
Gotcha.
concrete ballast on top of the rocks.
Yeah, I didn't realize it was like a, a racking.
It would all be on ballast. You can't put anything underground.
Okay.
Aiden, you look at this.
I think we're all good. There's a bunch of emails with Dylan back and forth today on some tweaks to the resolution and um, I don't think we have any comments towards the resolution.
Okay, so we're going to go and finish this off tonight. Uh, Aiden, uh, sorry, Dylan has done the ominous work on this. We're going to let him take us through the resolutions.
All right, so as we went through a little while ago, we're looking at a five megawatt um, solar facility. It's going to be on a retired landfill. Um, because of this, it's less than twenty-five acres of work being done. So under six seventeen point five B fourteen, it's a type two action. So you don't have to do a neck deck on this. Uh, you see on page two, going through three, four, five, six, seven, and then partially on eight. Um, we've got the elements of a site plan basically for a solar project where each one of them has what the section of the code is, and then it has the finding that demonstrates that these sections have been met and that there's no issues, you know, from a code perspective. So if the board wants, we can go through those. If there's any questions on specific items, you know, we can discuss those. Um, but if not, I think we can head to the, uh, specific, site specific and then conditions generally on the project.
Okay, with me.
Me too.
Yeah, and these are all things that we've discussed around the actual site plan itself. So they're, you know, in the record as far as, you know, being reviewed and discussed. Um, so once we get to the standard conditions, the first one is adherence to any and all changes requested by planning board members, town of Fallsburg staff, planning board attorney, town engineer, town planner, and or other technical consultants during the review and approval process. Next one is payment of all fees in accordance with town fee schedule, including payment of any outstanding consultant escrow fees. We had the, uh, an additional fee in there that's only for residential, so that was removed. Um, moving to the site specific conditions, we have first one, actual equipment to be installed will be based on the availability of equipment in the supply chain at the time equipment is prepared. Equipment specification sheets for all equipment to be installed will be provided at the time of building permit application. So that would go to Greg. Following installation of the solar energy system, the applicant will provide the town board department with an as-built plan set. Um, as Walter noted, there's a chance that this is going to shrink down substantially. So, you know, once that as-built plan is ready with D E C approval, you know, that'll come through and records will be available for that. Project owner will establish financial security to satisfy the town upon execution of the decommissioning plan. Uh, the whole purpose of this is if the project doesn't work and it stops operating at any point, if the applicant just says, you know, we're not making money here and just leaves and doesn't want to pay an expense, there's going to be a bond in place that the town would then be able to pull money from to decommission the site and turn it back to the retired landfill. So, you know, it's, uh,
Is there a figure attached to that?
There is. The decommissioning plan will have what it would cost as of today, and typically it's two percent increase.
We won't have that, Greg, until we know what the actual size is after D E C.
Okay.
That's a town board matter, and we've discussed it with Rich now, and he's aware that the decommissioning will depend on how many modules are there because the racking has no cost because it's steel. The cost, the scrap value equals the.
Gotcha.
So we'll know when we, when we know how many modules.
Next one is maximum height of racking, modules and electro, electrical equipment will not exceed fifteen feet. Row spacing shall not be less than twenty-two feet. E R P contains all information required by the solar law. E R P will be provided to the county of Fallsburg Police Department and town personnel listed in the E R P prior to issuance of a building permit. The project owner will offer training and offer an onsite tour prior to commercial operations to the local fire department. And as part of that, there will be proof of offering training being provided, you know, you'd be code enforcement officer prior to issuance of a certificate, certificate of occupancy. So this one, we put in proof of offering it because it's not unusual for no one to show up. And then it becomes a question of you only offered it and the training never happened because no one showed up. So it can be a bit of a catch twenty-two. So this way it puts the impetus to demonstrate that you, you know, sent notices, you offered the course, and people either showed up or they didn't. Um, the next one is the equipment actually procured at the time of installation of the system must be commercially manufactured. The specification for all equipment shall accompany the application for a building permit. And then an emergency action plan must be provided and approved by Keystone Engineering prior, prior to issuance of a building permit and a roadway maintenance and improvement agreement must be entered into between the applicant and town of Fallsburg prior to the issuance of a building permit. There was another, uh, site specific condition that we had on other projects which I put in and then I you know, spoke with Walter and went through and struck through, but this one would have been, I just want to run it by the board to make sure we're all in agreement. So this one's been removed, but I just want to, you know, through the record, as a condition of special use permit approval, the final decommissioning plan must be filed against the deeds of the involved properties. And that evidence of filing be provided prior to issuance of a C L for the project, which shall be approved by the town of Fallsburg Town Board. The reason for removing this is that the town owns the property and has a lease. So they're obviously going to be aware of the situation and also are going to be part of negotiating not only the decommissioning bonds, but will be the, uh, as we'll say beneficiary of any, um, decommissioning bonds that exist. So the town will always be in the loop. So, you know, the protection is built in there. And that, uh, runs through everything. I don't know if there's any questions.
Any board members have anything?
No.
All right, the resolution is, uh, resolution approving special use permit with conditions and site plan approval with conditions for the New York Fallsburg LLC solar project located Old Greenfield Roads, Frank Brown Road, the town of Fallsburg, New York. We have a motion for approval of the special use permit and the site plan. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it. Good done.
Thank you, Dylan.
Any second item, the nation bill, just.
Nation bill, we're here for the last month. Um, September, February, and I feel, and that, that vocal determination, so comment. That's pretty good, man.
You have a rendering there, I thought?
Yes, we should have that.
The reality is it's only be seen from within the development itself.
The big development behind the rally without her.
Truly is no windows because it's a, it's a, uh, mix, so you really can't.
Windows wouldn't work on.
Yeah, no.
Okay, well, never.
I think everything has been removed from the property?
No, maybe a condition on the approval. You spoke about that last time, a condition on the approval.
I don't know. I think maybe you should move them before we even go to this. Before you come back there. I think that's what we said, before you go back there, not really moved.
Yeah, we have. We do have that written in with the conditions that Greg will be able to inspect and ensure that speaker's been removed from even the pool area.
We have one condition on the reservation.
Don't prevent until we get.
Yeah, that's fine.
For the exact right, uh, site specific on that. Uh, any loud speakers or external speakers located at the pool area both men's and women's pools, they'll be removed prior to issuance of a building permit and shall be approved by the code enforcement inspection, I assume. And then, and code enforcement officer. So they can't get a building permit as long as those are there.
And help me make sure that they don't put them back after they get the approval.
Then they're breaking down. They're, they're against soundboard to begin with. Okay. Pretty simple.
Yes, simple.
Uh, site plan amendment to the original site plan for the nation bills. Uh, there's various whereas is the application and location and so on. Uh, particularly of note or the, uh, site specific, the applicant shall obtain technical review approved from town designated engineer at Keystone Engineering prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy for the proposed project. And B, any loud speakers, I just read that one, uh, will be taken down before building permit. Uh, the rest is the typical boil plate that we have on these things.
Right.
Death review and so on, so on. Anybody have any further questions? All right, there are no motion for a site plan amendment.
Motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
All right, fine.
Your eyes have it.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one of you will talk to take.
I'll sign this off from the tier road and Tom, Tom, and Clive will speak on it.
Move that.
Good evening, everyone. Um, Connor Reformic, uh, Colliers Engineering and Design and Project Manager of, um, at Colliers and I'm one of the double engineers on the project. So I'll just do an overview of the project, take the board through it, and, um, we'd love to hear any questions that, um, arise. So the project is a clustered subdivision. It's located on the north side of Matier Road on tax lot twenty-six dash one dash sixty-four point two. Uh, the property is currently zoned A G. Uh, the parcel is a hundred and fifty-five point one nine acres in size. And the site is currently a mix of woodlands, open fields, and wetlands. So it's big. Um, as part of the town code, we prepared a conventional subdivision plan, um, for the, uh, property, which showed, uh, that six lots are uh, compliant to the town board requirements, uh, within that zone.
And it's a zone.
Yes.
And I assume you've eliminated a lot of those, you mentioned wetland and that's all.
Correct. All those air, uh, slow calculations have been done. Now they're on the plan. This plan has been, um, updated since it was originally circulated. So after we prepared this and we showed, uh, that six lots were compliant, uh, we've progressed with the cluster subdivision. That's the one we did, uh, fully engineered plans on. Um, sorry, down here. That's this plan I have up here in front of you. Uh, so the applicant is proposing a cluster subdivision, which I've stated, um, which allows for an additional lot, a total of seven residential lots to oppose. Um, of the hundred and fifty-five acres that, um, that encompasses the site, a hundred and twenty-four uh, will be for conservation. Another three point eight will act as a buffer around the size of. Uh, will be for conservation, another three point eight will act as a buffer around the size of the. Lots here. Um, both those together uh constitute eighty-two point six percent of the site, which will be um conserved. Additionally, there's another one point six in right away dedication uh within Matero Road and potentially dedication of the. The, uh, what we have designed as a town road for the development. The remaining twenty-five acres will um be part of the individual residential lots. Uh, no area or use variances are being sought by the applicant. The lots are served by the proposed uh. Uh, dead end road, which will have a cul-de-sac, uh that road has been designed. Uh, to conform to the town specifications for a minor road. Uh, we did also review the connection point because this is a windy road that has a lot of vertical uh and horizontal curves. Uh, it does meet site distance requirements for the. Uh, thirty-five, thirty, excuse me, thirty mile per hour road that's there. Um, a stormwater mitigation area has been sized, uh but we, we are still preparing us uh. Stormwater pollution prevention plan for the project, but that has been noted on the plan. Additionally, each individual lot will be serviced by individual well and septic system. Uh, we have done soil testing for this um. For each of these lots. Um, and their size to. For a four bedroom, single family residential house with low floor fixtures. No wetland disturbances proposed as part of the project. Um, uh, as part of the construction, nine point two acres of. Uh, soil disturbance is anticipated and uh it's anticipated to be phased to be under five acres at any one time. Um, I have a couple items, I'd love to get feedback from the board, but um. That's as far as introduction. The project, uh, stop there.
How did you approach though?
Oh, they were actually uh fairly good. Uh soils between. Somewhere as good as, like they were too good, they were getting like. Under ten minutes, uh so we had to poke around a little more to find a little actual lower areas. Um, but it's. I'm from Orange County, so these are, it was great soil up here as compared to where I'm from. Uh, everything below thirty is.
That's unusual.
Yeah.
Oh, really? Yeah. Great soil, I did it myself, so I was out there.
I mean, you're trying, got lucky.
Got luck, yeah. Got a good spot.
Yeah.
So I have a couple of questions, uh, the, the house, the footprint of the houses, or do we have an approximate uh? Square footage of the houses planned out for each house in this development?
We don't have a, we didn't pick a typical architectural plan to go around, we just picked a good size shape, given a four bedroom size, we.
Okay.
That the uh. Thirty by fifty, right now?
Because I, I, from experience being the code enforcement officer in a town. Nobody builds a four bedroom house in, in the town anymore.
It's just a regular subdivision and then, so each, whoever buys the lot will come with the house plans.
So if they only plan the septics for four bedrooms though.
They'll have to.
They'll have to redesign.
Well, they're not, they're just. Checking the perk rate for septic.
Okay, I just want to make sure that if there is, I, I mean, I won't have to try to limit them to four bedrooms if, if, if it's only designed, that, that's my.
If they want to build a seven bedroom house, they have to come in with a plan for that many bedrooms and the septic design for that large.
Okay, that's, those, those are my concerns.
Where you're, yeah.
If. Where they did the test changes because of the, they want to change the layout of the lot, they'll have to do new tests. Wherever they propose the system, if, if they change that.
Okay.
It's likely if someone did come uh trying to pull a building permit for a seven bedroom house. You, we're gonna need to do additional tests uh for me to feel comfortable signing off on those.
Okay, that's all that's, that's concerned about.
Mr. Quonker, I believe you have a. Memo.
Yeah, I said they led it to the board with cops to everyone. Uh, it appears that the town, we originally thought about dedicating the road. To the town, however, uh, uh, the town's not interested in that. So we're going to have an H O A. The H O A will cover the stormwater management area, the buffer area of the road. Uh, developer will maintain. Title to the conservation parcel. And each homeowner will have a uh. A right of way uh to the conservation parcel. And have the right to use that for recreational purposes. Once again, because it's a conservation parcel, there'll be no construction on it. But the developer will maintain control so that he can post it. Uh, maintain it, um log it possibly, uh in accordance with the rules of the town of Fallsburg. Uh, but it looks like we're gonna have an H O A. Uh, to handle those areas. And of course, that's gonna have to be approved uh by the town.
Okay.
And I think a week, I outlined that in my letter to the board and I've also outlined the amount of bakerage, which Connor. Brad was basically reviewed as well, considering the amount of bakerage for development. And which is only a small portion of the property and most of it is the conservation parcel, I suspect.
Every, everything north of this line is a conservation area as well as the buffer, uh which I shaded here in green, all besides. Those are.
I believe the Department of Health will have to review this as a major subdivision over five lots, so it should be a condition for D O H approval.
I have a question to the attorney. Can we? Stop logging on that conservation property?
Conservation easement as well.
I think under the town code and state code you can, I mean, there's certain provisions on how much.
They do have to get permission from the town.
They have to get a logging permit. They have to, yeah, they have to go through Greg.
But I would like to, I would like to say that no, they can't do it. So the property stays the same in the conservation area. Is that possible?
Why would you, why do you want to lock somebody out of uh being able to log their land if they want to?
Yeah, no, thank Gary, the, 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 I, I have a bunch of wood left when I logged up. Some pieces recommends. Logging, uh, because it promotes. These can stick your right up. What I'm getting at is that I want to keep as many trees in this town as possible.
Gary. How do we ensure something, there's no clear cutting?
Right. Yes, that's the. There has to be a reasonable, reasonable relation to the condition in the project, so I think. No clear cutting, you know, would be something that's, I think everyone agrees reasonable, but no cutting would be problematic.
When you're involved with this, sometimes you get involved. With what they call a forestry management program, where they control. That you're not gonna clear cut. You're not going to make it so that on your high slopes, everything's gonna start to wash out. So there is, there's ways of doing it by forestry man- management.
Yeah, we, we, I've done that, we've had a professional forest who will, who will lock the trees. Commercial cutting, usually hardwoods uh in this area. And, but once again, the D C promotes uh intelligent logging, which, which will allow second growth. And will put, and with sunlight, will promote additional growth for trees. So once again, we have no intention of doing clear cutting, but there'll be selective cutting of hardwoods. And once again, I think the hardwoods have to be twelve or fourteen inches in, in width to make them commercially viable. So uh, I, I've done that before, that's what the D C strongly recommends. I just asked.
Okay, uh, there'll be a public hearing, we'll call for next month.
Uh, that's where we would request, I assume you're gonna be the lead agency, the, the board will be the lead agency.
I'm see the, that's the uh unlisted action.
Pardon?
Would be uh, lead agency of unlisted action, I believe.
A secret action.
Yeah.
Your motion to speak to the agency status, unlisted action.
First.
Second.
Second.
Second. Okay, we've done that, you could start it. Public hearing should be interesting, um. This is the first cluster development that we've actually got, not as far on. One of the things we need to do, and I'd like to do it tonight. It's resolve the issue of the number of units forward. In other words, in the, in the law. It says that the planning board by resolution will establish the maximum residential yield on the property, now that has been. Gone over many times. And the number six comes up. Plus they get a bonus of one for the cluster. So what we want to do is we want to vote. Um, to accept the, the maximum yield, the residential yield, and seven year, seven lot. Residential. Any questions on that, anybody want to comment on that? Anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I might do motion, seven lots.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, that's set, so you can depend on that number.
Seven residential.
Seven, seven residential lots. And so where. Who?
So we're gonna have, are we having seven residential lots and one conservation lot, so there's eight lots total?
Yeah.
That'll be a separate fossil.
Okay, but, alright, yes, that's good.
We discussed that in the work session, and that'll be a separate fossil with the, the right of homeowners to have access.
I want to think of how you're gonna, in the law it says it has to be delineated. In some manner, so think of how you're gonna do that, posters or whatever.
We've done this in the past, we have a, a detail for marker that we can um. Put every so many feet um at, as the board requires.
Okay. Uh, you make the suggestion since the board doesn't have any experience on.
Okay, well, I'll have to dig out that other project, they don't, I don't want to give you a number right now.
We do that. Uh, anything else we need to do tonight on it?
What are you gonna notice I have, your approach, that would, and, and the building department. Need language for conservation land easement. And markers and land, and landmarks. That we don't have.
Yes.
Right, there's a number of items that, that come into this. Right now, all we've noticed, it says what standard.
That should be noted that, that's what's needed.
That's what I'm saying, it's.
It's the, now, there was a, a. Site plan, actually a number of pages there, that you sent us, is that the final plan as far as you're concerned?
Oh, no, uh, we've had a conversation with the, your consultant. The board, so the, the conversations that we've had after that did not check, uh, did not make it onto this plan. After this meeting, we'll take the feedback from tonight as well as the comments, letters that we've gotten. Update the plan, prepare the full SWIP.
Okay.
Uh, add that eighth conservation lot and that would be the, the final plan.
That will be presented next month. Subject to uh. You don't know what comes up.
Yeah. Right.
After the public hearing, we'll see if there's anything more we need to add, so next month. You'll have another, a new set of plans and you'll have the fun of the public hearing.
So are, is the. Board going to schedule the public hearing for the next month's meeting?
You just, uh. And Jen gonna be here this week, tomorrow? You'll have to just, uh, Monday, you can get a hold of. Of Jen and she'll give you a mailing list for the public hearing. And the notice that has to go out.
Uh, I do have a question, I, I know because it's a subdivision, you can't close the public hearing until she, the, you know, we, a neck deck has been issued. So I, I.
You know. It probably been open.
We don't close it, we leave it until public written.
I'm sure.
Alright. Um, also, this isn't an ag district, so. We probably should do a two thirty-nine, um, just out of an abundance of caution on this one.
I was wondering.
Well, yeah. Hopefully that'll come, well, we're not, we won't be finishing it next month anyways. Be nice to have it in that time, unnecessary.
So, uh, would you like our office to prepare this, uh, those documents to circulate to the county planning or?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
If you need any contact info, you can also get with Jen. But we've been having the applicant submit it to the county.
Correct.
Now.
If you have a.
He submitted to Jen, Jen submits it to the county.
It's conservation easement. What does that specifically, you can't put a motorcycle jack on this.
Can't do anything with it, can't build on it, can't do anything with it.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it's gotta be ma- forever vacant.
Yeah, you could like hunt and fish, you know, go for hikes, things of that nature.
The point of the cluster, which, which I particularly like. Is that it's fun, leave the hills green.
Yeah.
They can't do anything with it after this. Building pressure takes place, they can't build. It's all set, we protected this another. Hundred acres or whatever it is for development, that's what's nice about these clusters. Uh, motion for the public hearing in the, the September meeting.
Well, Johnson.
Second.
Second.
Alright.
Okay, so you scheduled.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
And you have Jen's email, Connor?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Do we know when the public hearing will be?
Next month.
Next month.
Yes, we know.
Second Tuesday in September, I can look up the date for you. Providing they notice it on time, if they don't, if they don't notice it on time, it would, the public hearing wouldn't go through, but uh. It's gonna be September twelfth.
It's a Thursday, not a Tuesday, Brian.
Oh yeah, September twelfth, so second Thursday of the month. I said Tuesday?
Yeah.
I meant to say Thursday, it's been a long day, okay.
Most of the tea.
The twelfth, the twelfth of September.
Okay.
If you're a neighbor, if you're a neighbor, you'll get a mailing.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the.
And uh, John Clay representing Sushi Bowl LLC tonight. Uh, we were here last month, uh, trying to get a silverware storage container that I put in. Uh, but that is not allowed to do some zoning, we would have to go for our base to disowning for the reveals. Uh, after a conversation with the owner, uh, he had decided to put up a storage building instead of that. Instead of a container, it will be a building. So.
Will the storage container be in the building?
Storage container will be in the building.
That's what I'm doing.
Yes, well.
Nice way of doing it, surrounded with wood.
It's gonna be a nice, it'll be just as a, other working building. You know, regular working building. Although, you know, storage containers are allowed by the closest street, they're right on the next property. But that's a different zoning, that's a B zoning, this is a mixed uh M I zoning, so that's why it's not allowed in the zoning. So uh, they will do just a regular building around it. Um. So with that changed, I guess we can move forward with the planning board, I'd like the planning board to consider. Scheduling a public hearing for this meeting, for this project, for the September twelve meeting as well. And uh, we'll have to go out to the county for two K nine of U S and some state group fifty-two.
One other thing, we're also looking forward to a rendering.
Okay, um, I can make sure to bring that at the next meeting, uh, what we're talking about.
That's gonna be rather tall building for the, for the location.
Okay, I mean, whatever, whatever is proposed meets the zoning requirements. Uh, but we can work on a rendering and get it uh at the next meeting.
Parking.
You got a problem right now.
I mean, this is the only business actually that has parking on site, um, all the other businesses do not.
Joe, uh, Route fifty-two.
Yeah.
Go up. Woodburn, delivery. There's not, there's time that you cannot yet. Through by the sushi. Because they're trying to get into the parking lot and there's no place to park.
In. In busy times, they do have uh people there. Their employees to uh direct traffic to make sure that they go in and out properly. I mean, maybe you have your times, but uh for most, for the most time, it's not that, that big of an issue. For their place, so I mean, they have the, the, you know, shirmers across the street, I mean, they just back out on the road, they just might, you know, right, right down the road.
No question, okay, but you're adding to that, you're adding to that problem. By not able to get into the parking lot with ease, okay? Because what's happening. And I had, my own experience, that's why I'm here, okay? There's two and three cars waiting to get into the parking area, so you gotta wait. You go forward, because you're not gonna go around those three cars into the opposite lane to get killed, okay? So there's not enough parking space. Now, if you let them have that. Container and build a shed around it. You're eliminating parking space that should be available to the customers.
But this, this is right at a corner, but we'll, we'll take a look, we'll take a look at the park, we'll take another look at the park and see if there's any way that we can.
You remove, you remove, yeah, but if you remove the container. You've got maybe six or eight more parking spots. That they could use. And the other.
They need to have, they need to have storage, that's okay, being a building there.
And the other section is, the container is on somebody, is next to somebody's property, is it on the property line?
Do you have a lot?
Is it allowed by?
There are lots.
It's allowed, it's allowed in the location, I mean, a built, not a container, a building is allowed in the location where the container is.
But the container is not allowed.
That is correct, yes.
And so the, the amendments aren't bringing any additional customers, it's gonna be staff housing, correct?
That is exactly right.
Okay, yeah, so it's not gonna make whatever the situation is existing now.
Getting at, you remove the container. You got more parking area.
But they don't have storage.
Okay? That's the issue.
We'll, we'll take a look and see.
You can't get into the parking area because you got that container. Covering the whole area. And it's not supposed to be there in the first place.
Uh, this is gonna be. Second floor of residential. Second floor residential, how many apartments?
Two apartments on the second floor and one apartment on the third floor.
Okay, now, these are employees?
Uh, maybe employees, maybe rented out.
Get fired, say?
Whatever, whatever building call we, will require, which is probably gonna be a sprinkles system and so on, we'll, we'll be in the talk.
Is they're gonna be from the outside, an entrance in the second floor?
I'll get that, of that for the next, of the next meeting.
What is the second floor used for now?
They, they have some storage and some other space.
So would your, uh, owner of this place, you willing to put it in, when we give them their approval on this? At the second floor, would never be turned into a dining hall?
We can probably put that as a condition, I mean, they shouldn't do that without.
I know, I know, no. I hear you, but I'm saying, they're gonna take the second floor, turn it into the third floor, and the second floor is gonna come a dining room area. So if they're willing to put that in there, let's see if they're willing for that.
Okay, no problem, I'll run it.
Cause if they do turn into the, the dining room area, you're gonna need additional parking for the.
Special parking. So if you're willing, you're willing to say no, we're never gonna turn that into a dining room.
In writing in.
Right, right, right.
So with this lot. Is there more rooms that can be increased? For parking, or no?
We'll take a look, I mean, there's more land, like, closer to the lake, but I don't know how close, uh.
That was close.
Or there's, I mean, they have, they have, obviously, they're still thinking that. Uh, they have the most parking. They only want to improve the roadway and the curb and part of the, so they did a lot coming into this town.
Uh, to be honest, to be honest with you, I'm glad to see it's no business. Okay? I'm hoping. Prosperous and does do well, alright, but you guys are able to accommodate. The expansion of your business, sure. Alright, that's, that's the issue.
Coming by both.
There you go. Uh, without being here tonight. Um, declare, uh, the lead agency, schedule public hearing, and, uh, pick up on that.
Before you do that, I wanna, I wanna ask the building department one question.
Okay.
The second story, at least above the car, that was built above the custom stand.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Did they have a building permit for that?
Sure did.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all.
I think they came to the planning board too.
Yes.
It was a planning board, it was a planning board, and it was a building permit, we had an engineer. Uh, look at the building when they, the second floor, Joey Racy. Uh, he's gonna be also designing the third floor, if that's, if that's.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. And Joey Racy.
That's what it was.
Joey Racy is a very reputable architect I've dealt with for many years, so, yes, so.
And that going down, you're going out the back. Question, um, to our attorney. Would this be a type two? Or we need to go on this?
I don't think. A new floor, it's technically still in the footprint.
With the storage noise. I'm looking at the lead agency and.
As well, you've got the storage building.
Yeah, the storage building's gonna, but that's less than four thousand square feet, right? Yeah, so that would be title two in itself. As an accessory structure, I think it would be type two.
Alright, well, let's, let's do this lead agency. And leave a status for research. Motion for lead agency status?
Motion.
Second. Okay, one favor. Yeah, and we'll, we'll look up to see what should do. I think these people on their toes. Little manly. They get out the progress, yeah. Anything to do with. You went to public hearing?
You usually have the answer for that. Action.
To lead agency. What about a weak moment?
Yeah.
No, I didn't, I didn't look it up, so, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, I think that's all we can do tonight.
We need a motion for public hearing today night, or we just, uh, schedule?
Most of the public hearing.
We're arguing that point right now.
Second.
Favor.
Alright, done.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hey. Item number five, you see the, and I can't, I have to rest, so we can.
Well, well.
We'll have that to me.
There, there.
What?
Just a big.
Right, here it goes.
I have, I got, I got a few, few items, not so much.
Okay. So I.
Think we're ready to finish this in a moment, Mike?
Yeah.
Right, but, but, so, uh.
You think so? You think so?
That's fine, I always do, I'm not always, I'm like.
So the first item we would need to do would be the negative deck. Not only.
Need a motion.
Well, I wanna go through the, the, see what it says. We have, we have a, uh. Move up the resolution to do that. Well, you can take it through it now.
Okay. Alright, so we've got a, uh. Type one action. It's dealing with about approximately a hundred and eighty-two acres located at the intersection of East Pond Road and Dairyland Road. Um, as part of the seeker process, there was a full EAF done. Got the site plan that was reviewed. And as a type one, um, which was really due to just, uh, you know, the amount of buildings going in and. The density of, uh, those items. We. Sent the notices out to involved agencies and interested agencies, and then looked at the potential environmental impacts. Uh, the first one being impact on lands, which was determined, there's none anticipated as far as significant adverse impacts. The same finding for geological features. And surface water. Um, there will be a speedies, um, so that's gonna cover, you know, impacts of water. Um, as far as. Um, any impacts on the groundwater and just bio retention. Flooding, there was no significant adverse impacts, actually, same with air. Impacts on plants and animals, there's no threatened or endangered species. Um, so we ran through the list and, you know, ultimately, there was no. Impacts that were deemed significantly adverse through the seeker process for a type one. So, turning to the resolution adopting the seeker negative declaration. We basically walked through the same. Same items that, uh, intent for lead agency was taken April fourteenth. Declaration of lead agency was done, that's April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, February eighth, twenty twenty-four. The board declared itself lead agency, there was a GML. Two thirty-nine that went out, um, back on June ninth, twenty twenty-two, was deemed incomplete, there was one that was sent out last month. However, the thirty days have elapsed, and we haven't received it back from the county, which. Is taken as, you know, no impact or comment, so it would be a local determination.
Okay, the one issue that came out of the public hearing. That had to do with seeker was the impact on transportation. And there's a paragraph in here that, uh. Project will not have a significant adverse impact on local traffic. Uh, studies applied by the applicant initiative, while there will be minor increases. Summitary time, peak hour, traffic volumes on the adjacent streets. With associated minimal increases. An average control delay times at the key, adjacent intersection, traffic levels and levels of service. Would not be negatively impacted. And close web site. Distance and so on. Um. In addition, the applicant clarified to the town traffic engineer. That the camp operates over approximately eight weeks with only two camp sessions. Which of the campers. Stay for full eight weeks, while others only attend the first and second sessions as such. Only four notable peak times for summer associated with campers arriving, driving or departing. For each session, in other words, the traffic. Starts not to be as much of a problem.
And a, a traffic study, as you said, have been prepared, have been reviewed by the town engineer, by the time traffic was already low.
Right. And that, that was the biggest. Biggest thing on the public hearing, so I wanted to brush that.
Yeah, and those are mitigating factors that are accounted for finding of no significant impact.
Besides on parents' day, we got that on the control, right?
Well, this last parents' day, family day was. It wasn't a disaster.
It was, pretty much, if you went up the road, yeah.
I, I thought it was the best that I've ever seen it.
It was quite, quite good on the road there.
Yeah, but there would.
And anything in the future would be.
Ten school buses on the road.
No, there wasn't a school bus.
Oh, that's, that's, um. See, see, you think. As long as they can get in. Do whatever you have to do, you got plenty of land in there, but the, the key is not to do it on a road in front of.
Much of that, and that's exactly what's being accommodated with this site plan, and hopefully, people will listen, and people will do what they have to do.
Yeah.
Okay, so, that's the negative deck. Uh. In consideration of all the research and that we've gone through that already. Uh, motion is, the fourth we're playing word finds that the project will not have a significant impact on the environment and negative declaration. Is hereby adopted, do I hear a motion to that, or an objection?
Yeah.
No objection?
Second.
Motion is a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Alright.
Any against? The eyes have it. They have to be an actual. Site plan.
What do we do about the, uh, two bungalows down the road, did you look at those?
I think they're under the site.
Yeah, they're in the site.
For any building, for what they, but those bungalows gotta be examined and fixed if you're gonna keep using them.
Right, and that, and that, and that is one of the site, uh, site specific conditions.
Right, that's one of the conditions.
This, uh, building mom will come look at it and, uh, that will have to be beautified.
Okay.
Beautify? Okay.
I think that's actually.
Go to paint. That's straight from Bucky's mouth, yeah, I wanted to use your language.
Yeah.
You're right, right.
Absolutely, I wanna take it through the other.
Yeah, so. We have all the recitations regarding seeker that we just went through, uh. As far as the site plan goes, it involves the addition of dorms, a shul, classrooms. Mikvaz dining room building for three hundred additional campers with eighty-eight staff housing units. A water building, laundry building, recreational building and two pools. Um, we have the standard conditions, you know, the first one always being adherence to any and all changes requested by the planning board members, town of Fallsford staff, attorney, engineer, planner. Or other technical consultants during the review process. Implementation of all mitigation measures referred to in the environmental assessment form and neg deck. Payment of all fees in accordance with town fee schedule, including fees in lieu of recreation lands specified in one thirty-five dash two. In payment of any outstanding consultant escrow fees, offer of dedication to the town of land or easements for roads, utilities, et cetera, that may be shown on the plans, or is determined to be necessary by the town engineer. And site specifics, the first one is code enforcement inspection of the two bungalow units and trailers on the southwest property line. Which is housing for the summer caretaker and maintenance employees to ensure they meet safety codes and to improve aesthetics by beautifying. These buildings to code enforcement officers approval.
You'll do it, Bucky?
You'll do it, once they fix them up.
And the second. Additional, uh, site specific condition would be that the two lots. Must be combined into a single lot, um. I would have it before certificate of occupancy or. It's one of the four building permit, I don't, I don't know if there's a preference.
Should, it shouldn't take long to get it out.
And that's, uh, the main items. So the, um. The sewer, I remember Joel, Joel, you planned on the sewer upgrades prior to this whole project coming.
The sewer, sewer is actually.
Sewer's done, so, okay, and that's completely signed off on? Okay.
Yes, we have, alright.
Alright, so, great, that's, this, get to, usually, it's the, it's usually, it's the other way, we're, we're. Trouble, we're fighting to get that done at the end of the.
Make the D C approvals in the file.
Okay.
If you don't have it, can you?
Yeah.
You should have, because, uh, with somebody's application. You know, for the sewer work, so you should have.
I'll, I'll.
If you need anything.
I'll, uh.
You know, I can even, you whatever.
I'm gonna check for that, see if I have it, okay.
Has the town engineer reviewed everything, and he's satisfied?
Uh. This sketch and site plan has been reviewed, but a, a detailed, uh, review of the. Uh.
So he hasn't reviewed it yet?
It has been reviewed, but. The final conditions haven't been satisfied, he hasn't signed yet, that's what goes on next.
Okay.
Without, without their stamp, uh.
Art won't sign the site plan until Ken stands.
It has been submitted to the town.
There's been a couple of back and forth reviews done, um, but it's, it's not, not been signed off yet.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, motion for site plan approval?
Motion.
Right, second?
Second.
Favor. Any against? The eyes have it.
Thank you.
It's be a good night, or, if we can do the next one. Okay, we see the, I. I am. Where would we fall around here, something?
Joel didn't know why we called it the charm pool.
I think it was misspelled, and there was.
It's a tag though, and, uh.
Yeah.
Okay.
You made it up.
That's fine. Uh, good evening, Joel Cole here for, uh, sit by its time, that's a school on old Route thirty-two. Uh, the, it's, it's, that line has been, uh. Mostly engineered. And, uh, we're just here to get final input to the planning board for kind of, you know, his comment before. To go ahead and. Better include them for approval for the next meeting. Uh, we didn't, we were here, uh, two months ago, we had a public hearing, there was only, I think there were three members of the public. Uh, that spoke at that meeting, one of the member, the first, uh, comment was about the water and electric children. Which, uh. This, this, this is not within any water district, they will have their own drill well, and the other two comments were basically positive comments for the. School. Alright, two ten nine of you came back last month. Um. With, uh, local determination. Suggested that we add more landscaping upon the property. Which, uh, that will be done.
Did we bring, uh? The engineer and, uh.
Yes.
Later on, bordering.
So you'll want, uh, comments from Adam, and you haven't got any, have you?
Adam did. I think actually the first, uh, comments that it did in the town was for this project.
Yeah, we're.
Justice.
They'll, they'll way back towards sketch plan.
So, make sure you have, uh, reviews for the next.
Yeah, we'll submit it to P Stoll for the review.
Yes, and, uh. Do the plan. Do we need a rendering on this one?
Yeah.
Uh, this is how this, this is all going now, but.
Wow.
Exactly how it's gonna look.
That's impressive looking.
But the, the building plan is actually completed, so, uh, that's, that's why, yeah.
It's exactly.
Yes.
Can you submit that?
And go to the public.
Can you submit that for the public here?
Is that basin, is that basin area or wood?
Already has like.
Oh.
That's wood. Or wood?
Well, he answered.
Wood.
Oh. Getting to public hearing.
Yeah. I think the question, I'm looking over the plan.
Yes.
You have. Sixty students, possibly. Thirty-two, I understand, you're, from. Overnight or weekly, whatever it is. I don't see any outdoor recreation space at all. I don't see any outdoor recreation space at all.
Did you plan to have some outdoor recreation? I mean, it's not shown, nothing shown on the site level, they do plan in the future to have.
I'll write it on the site plan.
Okay, we can show some other.
You're in the country, you can have something.
Right, uh, this was, this was specifically discussed with the school and they they want to have outdoor recreation at some point.
At least an area on the plan designated to be included for, if you have to clear. Part of the.
Swift, swift.
And any recreation you might wanna put down with. Other than a field and softball, what are you gonna have?
What type? Well. We'll have a conversation and we'll show on the site or whatever they plan to have.
What age group are these kids? High school.
Boys, girls?
Boys.
Boys.
Does anyone have any questions right now?
What do we have for student count here?
Sixty.
So we have sixty students uh. In the building and now we have thirty two for overnight.
So close to a hundred. Well, are those sixty?
The sixty include the thirty two.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
We we should probably plan for some few, I mean, they they don't have sixty right now. I mean, they plan to have like, now like fifty or so. Um, so perhaps with the site plan, we should go up to it, they can have up to eighty, we should probably put that in. So we can accommodate more if they have future growth.
You're the applicant.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so we'll probably show that on the site like for maximum of eighty, so we have water and sewer if that needs some expansion in the future.
And then you'll you'll need a number for D O H for the well. When you get approval, so you'll have to tell them.
This way, there's some room for future growth.
Like not to save the hundred.
Think of that, whatever number, whatever number we'll design, water and so forth.
Anything else?
You need D O H and D C?
Yes.
We don't have yet.
No, we don't have uh, D H and D C boom at this stage.
I'm just following my notes.
Yep. So with that, I guess, hopefully we'll have everything back before the next planning board submission deadline. And I would like to ask the board if they can direct attorney or pilot to draft a Google resolution, like that.
I'm not sure we want to look at it before the resolution. If we, we should look at it first and then decide whether.
You mean to look at?
The entire project.
Okay.
Have you looked at it?
Well, Adam did his review, but it's progressed, so he should go back and see what.
Yeah, he might not be ready to finish it yet.
We'll see, we might be able to get it, if if Adam gets comments back before. The due date. For the next meeting, we can see if there's a complete enough for a resolution. If he has a bunch, if there's a bunch of outstanding comments, we'll make that decision whether they should be on the agenda or not.
Okay.
It's resolution pending planner's comments?
Pending, pending input.
Yeah, as long as you have the input you need, like. Four or five days before it's doable, if it's.
Yeah, we'll have it till last week.
Yeah.
I love those memos I get the day before. So it's up to you if you can get everything in and and if nothing comes up.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Uh, good evening Joel today for Urban State Junior. So Urban State Junior last Thursday on the planning boards in July fourteen twenty twenty two. Uh, we had a public hearing then, a letter responding to the comments of the public hearing was submitted as part of this planning board submission. The board at the time declared the agency as and the term of the agreement and all listed action. Uh, just to remind the board, this project, what it is. This site is on Route forty two right across Willow Heights Road, at the intersection of Willow Heights Road, it's in the Ozony district. And what we are proposing is, it's. It's a total of three tax basins right now. Uh, planning twelve points, existing of twelve point five six acres, they're proposing a four lot subdivision. Combining everything and subdividing into four lots, with three of the lots having just single family homes on them, that will be off Little Brook Road. Three lots, and then lot number four would be a duplex development, was originally proposed as twenty units. But because engineering was done in stormwater and grading and so on, one unit had to be eliminated, so not right now, it's nineteen units. So it's a nineteen unit duplex development, while the other three lots will be single family homes, that's what is only the last one.
What was the two year gap?
Between engineering, between uh, waiting for stuff.
She really starting over, I mean. If you remember a project from two years ago, the resolution. I think this. Sort of has to be presented different notes. Different to the initial occupation, we don't, I don't have any board members who remember this. There's no memory.
I remember him talking about it, right?
In other words, we've lost track.
So I I'm here, I'm reminding you what the plot is project is, and we're just talking, we can look everything up. Um, we have an obligation submitted, with never. Uh, location ever stopped. I I understand that the board, after two years, you know.
We've had one or two projects since.
Let me ask you, they have water rights, because there's no sense even going any further.
It's in, it's in the town.
I know it's in the town water, but with the development, where, what's going on already with water, I mean, was this concerned on our.
Well, that's the note that is on the agenda that you have to review it. But when it comes to approval, they might not be able to build it.
Right, so, you know, it's because you had. Been here for two years, you should know that, you know, there's not gonna be water for you.
But I mean, water, water and sewer will have to be addressed with the county when, when they get approvals to give adequate water and sewer to be obtained.
You wanna lock in, that's why I'm just wanting to make sure they know that, they wanna lock in.
But we don't, do we not get to the point where we do a negative deck because there is?
That's to get to that point.
So we may get to the end and then, and then you may get stopped.
Right.
You should have done it two years ago when we had water.
We'll have water.
You got a water problem right now. Yeah, I don't.
Well.
Okay, thank you.
He's, I I believe Joel's willing to look at it like he's gotta go, we didn't have a public hearing, did we?
Yeah, but it, that's what I said, we had a public hearing, there were, there were only two members from the public. Where's pilot to the public?
I mean, Dylan, but it, it doesn't have to be a new application, but you can ask for these items to be updated.
Basically, yeah.
If you think you want to.
They don't have to start. We have to do everything. As if we were new, we sort of, nobody remembers it.
There was a traffic. Study.
There's no traffic study, and this was a twenty unit project, so. So relatively, relatively small rather. We we did, it was a two ten nine view down, that's in comments, it's two ten nine view. Uh, DT was out there to look at a site location and at the entrance. Um, so there was a lot down.
Right, and that, that's all usable information. But uh.
It should be upgraded.
Isn't that where that road, the road comes up, is very steep there? And that looks. On on the.
Right across, right across, so the entrance is right across Willow Heights Road. This is Willow Heights Road, there's an existing drive on there.
Yeah.
Which will be upgraded and improved to meter five.
They're on the opposite side of the sewer.
Right, yes.
It's be a small door, are you on board on this one?
It should be.
Yes. We, I mean, we were. Engaged then and we have the files, so.
That must be also.
Um, I'm sure they were.
Yeah. If we needed to look it over, you can, you can see we're, we're a little puzzled.
So we'll, we'll pull up any comments that were given from Helen at that point and see. And and look at it again now that it's changed.
It hasn't, it hasn't really changed besides removing the one unit.
The unit, yeah.
The the project's still the same as it was before, I mean, I can submit all the information, I mean, everything should be a file, but I can resubmit everything that I've done.
I think we have everything here.
We need to open it to the public again?
Was the public hearing ever closed? I don't show that it was closed.
In no way, we closed probably.
We closed it? Alright, so.
We may wanna do the public hearing again.
You wanna do a public hearing, maybe one.
It was uh, it was over two years ago, the public hearing.
Yeah.
I mean, my.
Things have changed a lot.
Well, my thought is, from a seeker perspective at a medium, a minimum, you have to take a hard look because of. What has changed over the last two years, you know, two years ago, there was water, so that, you know, certainly is a huge item, so just to. Do the due diligence, um, it's not starting from scratch, everything that's here is still here, we just have to augment it with the changes that have occurred. Or just to make sure from a seeker perspective that we're checking all the boxes.
Nice to go. In other words, you can put the paperwork down, but we need to look at it all.
What about a traffic study under the new one?
Yeah.
I think we should. Uh, we got a lot more.
Yeah.
And to that.
But it isn't nineteen units, it's a relatively small project.
Nineteen cars.
It comes out on the main road.
Yeah.
And that main road sometimes backed up.
You can uh, you can maybe try a basic uh, where you, you know, you figure out the first generation and and so on. It doesn't have to maybe include counts, because all the roads. They counted in the last two years for all these projects, so it doesn't have to necessarily be as extensive.
No, they, look at that, look at that traffic study.
And at least that's gonna be on the record, what all the impact on the adjoining other particles, so.
What's just happening?
Subdivision is because it's being subdivided to four lots, I mean, right now it's it's a total of three lots. And with the proposal, it's gonna be it's four lots. There's gonna be a single family home lot of its corner of Route forty two on Willow Road and another two lots. At the dead end of uh, Little River Grove. Any difference we go, there are two existing homes on Little River Grove. And there'll be three more, two inside and then one at the corner. And the rest of it will be duplex development, this is a wetland, so there'll be. There'd be a bumper.
Very wet in there.
Yep.
And the neighbors complained about the water.
Now, this is Luxor Junior, whereabouts is Luxor, I mean, not Luxor Junior, I mean, Luxor, that's sore, that's running all over the ground, but that's beside the point.
Some of those you will need public hearing.
Where's uh, Urban Estates, where's the main?
Urban Estates.
Yeah.
Urban Estates is in the corner here.
Okay. Because they have problems with parking, actually, we gotta make sure that this place isn't gonna be jammed up like they are.
I'm just, this should have enough parking space. Uh. It's not related to Urban Estates. It's called Urban Junior, the owner has a house in Irving, so this is called Urban Junior.
You have what, two and a half per unit?
It's two units, uh, two units for, I mean, two cars, three units plus a couple of extra spots.
I think it's maybe two and a half.
I'll take another look at it.
Yeah.
Two, but we'll take.
In case they have friends though.
Yeah, my car.
So uh. Just curiosity, Joel, this, this subdivision, the housing duplex development?
Yes.
It doesn't have a uh, a shul, meeting room? Where, what are their plans?
It's only nineteen, it's only nineteen units, I mean, there will be people maybe going to Irving, maybe people about to Coola.
Oh, that's why I was just wondering how much foot traffic is gonna be across, across forty two, that's. That's my, my only thing, because on, you know, Saturday, there's gonna be probably foot traffic across forty two, if they're, if they're, if it's associated with everything.
There will be foot traffic, I mean, there may be foot traffic to Coola or Elm Shades or Grove.
Yeah, there's two, there's two synagogues, three synagogues within walking distance.
Four.
Four within walking distance, okay.
Uh, duplex, duplex model requires a four house or community building for anything above twenty five units.
Okay. Does the public hearing help on the subdivision?
Yes, of all.
And that should be simple subdivision, could be like one day if there. Let's take a look at it. It's pretty straightforward. Check to make sure the lot size and there's access, the usual thing. We can get that out of the way. Anything else?
Nope. I guess I'll be in touch with uh, Adam.
We didn't have capacity permits at this time, correct?
Correct, that's why I was saying.
So. Now, currently, once the project is approved, they have to apply for connection for the utilities. If there's capacity, they get a permit, but which we've. Known for the last several projects, they can't get the permit, so. The single family homes are still allowed to connect, so I'm just wondering if these three lots would be separate from the capacity permit.
Yeah, they're being handled as a separate item.
Right, just a separate application.
So I just wanna make sure that's clear when it's requested, that it would afford the nineteen units and not the three lots.
Or, I mean, we can, we can, we can, it's two separate actions, we can perhaps get a vote and an approval of the subdivision.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll do that. No, you've got it on the separate on the.
You're separate on the.
Right. So that's how the duplex evolved, I mean, we talked about a subdivision, so the next item in the subdivision, as I explained, it's a four lot subdivision. Uh, that we will be looking for approval. Um, as we discussed now, this can be done separately, should be done separately from the rest of the project. So with that uh. Kind of, we're ready for approval for something, or if you want to. Someone to review that.
Well, and hopefully you'll take a look at it, and there won't be anything on it, and we can do it in simple.
For the next meeting?
Yeah, so, that's, that's an easy one. Yeah, I hope it's true. Okay?
Okay.
Better to recount?
I can't.
Well, you'll, you'll need, Dylan, they would have to do a public hearing if they're doing subdivision, correct? Within sixty two days after the subdivision.
Yeah, after the public hearing.
For the neg, a neg deck of the subdivision?
Yeah, and that's a public hearings. Two years ago, so that's.
Probably can submit within sixty two days, what?
Approval typically needs to be done within sixty two days.
So we will extend it mutually, the timeframe of uh.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we can agree.
Right.
So we, we agreed to extend that time period, so.
I should.
Yeah.
I mean, it's gotta work both ways, if we agree, or we don't have to agree, you know.
But did we do a subdivision last time?
What?
We didn't do the subdivision, you weren't here for a subdivision.
It was all, it was.
So why wouldn't, why wouldn't the subdivision been done?
Give us a project name, come back. Okay.
Alright.
Okay.
Alright, are you on the next item too?
No.
Oh, come on.
Thank you.
Don't, I turn it around, yeah.
I can turn it around.
Um, when you get into W K, K, Brickman Road.
I think everybody.
No one's here, but I can do it, it's an A plant subdivision.
Yeah, but I'm waiting to pay for it though.
This one to avoid information was approved back in twenty twenty one, and they never came back.
Well, and I got the store.
They're very small lots, and it's gonna be a problem whenever we do it, so.
So I got eight minutes to, to, to school you.
Who's, who's winning?
So, me, that's what I said, it's uh, I got eight minutes to explain to you the, the stuff that's on here. This is, this is the uh, this is the project that's uh, on Brickman Road across from the uh. The. The mikvah, is it across from mikvah?
It's not.
Across, it almost crossed from the mikvah.
Is that where he started the road?
Where they went in with the road, they went in, they, they went in, they put the road in, started clearing some lots, and then they stopped. They, there was uh, some stuff where we needed some review on the infrastructure and stuff like that. And uh, I don't remember why, we, we'd stopped them.
They, they're not vested, they just put the entrance in and that was it, so they're coming back to finish the project.
Exactly.
But they never filed the massive account.
Up from high school.
They just, they didn't get a permit to do that, did they? I don't think.
They got a land servant.
Just a land servant.
And they started putting in, it's over, it's an infrastructure, and we told them to stop because we didn't, we weren't done reviewing the project.
It's on the.
It's on the lakeside, it's on, it's on, it's between like Twin Oaks and Scotts and Willow Woods, like on that stretch, across from high school.
You know, there's a driveway.
They were supposed to put in large. Homes.
No, 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 that's.
No, they don't have rooms.
That was, that was across from high school, that was the dead end.
Yeah.
That will um.
Bobby Shines started?
No.
And then we definitely had the best dead end.
It's past, it's almost to Scotts on the right hand side, it's across from the Hutzel Building.
Yeah.
It's across from the, the mikvah.
Correct, yes, the mikvah's on the hill, the Hutzel Building is directly.
The driveway he started there.
Just a dotted driveway, that's all.
Be gravelly put in here.
The homes were.
No, it's on the opposite.
Job's side of the.
Yeah.
That was supposed to be luxury houses.
It's supposed to be luxury, had the end. It's supposed to be luxury, had gems in the woods, it was called gems in the woods.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, I wanted to bring up, it was, it was Mike Riley's plan, and I don't know if. What the deal is, but now it's a different engineer using. Some of the same information, which doesn't have Mike Riley's information on the plans, which.
Not allowing them.
So I don't know what's going on with the project as far as that. Um, I was gonna, I was gonna reach out to the eng, the original engineer to see. If he knew what was going on, because they've changed the site plan. From his plan, that was, I believe, conditionally approved. And so, they should have. His, his information on there as uh part of the design for the state ed department, so I'm not sure. If they've just hired a new engineer to redo the whole project, or, or what? Cause if, if Mike gave his CAD files to this engineer, he, he should be listed on the site plan. Header.
Okay, they're not here.
So, nobody's here, I don't know what the deal is.
So they gotta start all over, right?
They're not here, I don't know.
They got approvals in twenty twenty one, yes.
I didn't know. Thank you, Art, right, I do.